Our October 10th Township Board meeting. If we could all first start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So we'll first start with public comment. We have two, or three options actually, for public comments. We're going to have the general public comment, and then for each public hearing, there's also additional public comment for each of those. So we'll start with, does anybody have any general public comment or wants to come up and speak? Okay. Close that public comment. And next, we'll go to the board minutes of September 28th, 28th, 26th, 28th. And are there any changes to the minutes? And if not, I have a motion.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Martin. I missed this in my first review. On page nine, after the roll call vote, it says a voice vote was called.
Oh, yes.
And so we should just strike that part that says a voice vote was called.
I did pick on somebody who had a holiday.
Thank you. Well, thank you for picking on me.
Sorry, sorry. But with that change, I'll make a motion to submit, or to approve.
Motion by trustee Shaw-Sack. Support by Clerk Brook. All in favor?
Aye.
It does pass.
Thank you, Michael.
Next, we have, so for public hearings, it says comment go first or after the hearing?
The comment goes after you open the hearing.
Okay.
So Patty would present.
Okay. Sorry, it's been awhile since we have people. It's exciting. Great. So we'll first start with the public hearing regarding the lot split request for 1836 Del Rose Drive. And we have Patty Volker.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so tonight, we have a request for a lot split involving 1836 Del Rose Drive. As you may recall, this was introduced at your last meeting last month, at which this corner lot, that's at Del Rose and Bloomfield Drive, is the subject of the lot split, of which the existing structures would be demolished, and the purpose is to subdivide the parcel into two single-family residential lots. This corner parcel is 1.98 acres and has frontage on both of those respective drives in the area west of Telegraph and north of Square Lake Road. And as we review the lot split request, we consider the standards that are found within Chapter 18, which is our division of lots or parcels. And as we review the standards, the applicant has provided us a survey that identifies the property. But I could just take a second and show you some photos of the premises as we see it today. Again, this is a corner lot with the existing residents on the premises. And this is also the survey identifying the property at the lower right corner. And then here, this is a little more clearly defined, the location of the structures. There's also even a shed on the site. So the request is to subdivide, in the orientation as you're seeing it, from Bloomfield Drive. The corner parcel will have frontage both on Bloomfield Drive and Del Rose Drive, and the parcel A will be fronting on Bloomfield Drive. Each of these parcels exceed that minimum 16,000 square feet required in the R1 District by containing 38,768 square feet for parcel A and 43,995 square feet for parcel B. In both instances, they exceed the minimum 100 feet width with lots proposed with sewers. A sanitary sewer is proposed for each of these lots, and by definition, that 100-foot is met by the setback at 40 feet. In considering the review of the average of all residents with a principal frontage within 500 feet, we've prepared a chart for you within the staff report identifying that indeed, these two parcels do exceed the average. The average being .83 and .41, land acres, excuse me, for the parcels. And in this instance, parcel A is exceeding that by, as .89, and parcel B is 1.04 acres. And then the lot width, both are exceeding that average, which is either 109 feet off of Bloomfield Drive or 122 feet off of Del Rose, and with their respective 128 lot width for parcel A and 190 feet for parcel B. There is public water and sanitary sewer available for the existing parcel. Both resultant parcels will be required to pay the water capital and the direct connection charges, and the sanitary sewer debt and direct connection charges required at the time of a building permit. And the survey by JAD Engineering Services received on July of this year shows the building envelopes for each lot, as you can see by defining the setbacks for the R1 District. And the departments, various departments had an opportunity to review this proposal. I'd just note, the Engineering and Environmental Services Department reported that a tree permit will be required for proposed tree removal and required tree replacement on both lots. There is an existing drainage pattern in the area that'll have to be incorporated into any development plans, as a low spot may collect stormwater from the surrounding area, and the applicant will be responsible to determine if there's any wetlands in existence on the premises. And the board is being asked to evaluate the material that's been presented tonight, any comments that you made here during the course of the public hearing, and determine if the proposal is consistent and compatible with existing lots, parcels, and uses in the neighborhood. So with that, the board is being asked to consider two findings, one of which is to consider approval of the lot split as presented, subject to compliance with any requirements that the township departments have noted, or to deny the application as presented. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
So if we have anyone from the public on this one, if you want to come on up, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Kirk Branuck. I'm the president of the Square Lake Association. This parcel does fall within our association. I live at 1642 Hamilton. We've reviewed it. We think it's a plus for the neighborhood, and we're supportive. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? And is the applicant here? Does anyone want to add any information?
I'm Suzie Leiter, and I live at 1937 Bloomfield Drive, so we'd be right next to those two parcels. To me, I feel like it would be overwhelming to have two extra lots, or two extra houses right there. We already have quite a bit of traffic. You know, we only have the one way out of our street, Bloomfield Drive, and we are, the people that have just built on the other side have about six or eight cars there all the time, within the driveway, but sometimes on the road. And I just feel like having a bunch of new cars is going to, and just a bunch of new people, it's just going to be like overwhelming for that, that lot area. We're kind of a sleepy little neighborhood where we love to walk around the lake, we like to walk our dogs, kids are strolled around, elderly people take walks. And since Del Rose Drive has now been paved completely, people just zoom down there super fast. I mean, it just seems like there's just so much more commotion, especially at that intersection area. So, and I didn't know for sure, I didn't, wasn't able to ask, but, so would both parcels be coming out onto Bloomfield Drive? Onto Bloomfield Drive, is that what you're saying?
And we can address that when we come back up.
So, anyway, that's just my take on it.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Dale Leiter. I live at 1937 Bloomfield Drive. We've been there since 1991. We were the first house on that street. The city didn't even plow our road back then. Luckily, I had a tractor with a blade, so I could get the kids off to school. Nonetheless, partly, one of the reasons we built there was because it's a nice, quiet area, and we really enjoy it. And we've been there, you know, since 1991. However, part of the reason, not all, there was many reasons we bought there, but those two lots in general, the back of the lots were boarding up against the side of our property, and the front of the lots were on Del Rose. I have no problem with two houses, but can they be on Del Rose? And can the lot be as is? Because I think the lot that they're requesting is going from, two lots on Bloomfield Drive instead of two lots on Del Rose. And that's what I'm wondering, is there, are they wide enough to put the two houses bordering Del Rose, so only one house is technically on Bloomfield Drive, or their driveway? And we've noticed that area there, that intersection, two of our neighbors put up signs, please slow down, children at play, and people will come and just run over the signs. And one of those neighbors is sitting in this room. So it's just, there's a lot of congestion there, and I'm just wondering if two houses are put on Bloomfield Drive. There's already one lot left on Bloomfield Drive that hasn't been built on yet. So there's going to be more traffic on Bloomfield Drive. And this summer, or last summer, they put up a yield sign on our street, too, just because it's so dangerous there. The way people drive down Del Rose, and I take my dog around the lake every day, and I can tell if someone's doing 25 or 35. And once they pave that, it's just, it's like a freeway. So, you know, I trust you guys know better than we do. I appreciate your service and your dedication to Bloomfield Township, and we love being here. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment?
Just a little follow-up. I don't know if you need to show the diagram or not, but Lot B, those, the lines that you outlined, was that a footprint for the home, or?
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Mark Kolkmeier, 1921 Del Rose Drive, perpendicular to the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Lot B, the one on the right, is that, the square that you show there, is that a footprint for the home? And my question would be, I can't read the numbers here, are they, is that 40 feet from the road on each side?
I'll be happy to answer your questions at the end of. Yeah, what we do is we kind of take all the comment, and then they address all that one.
Okay, well, that was question one. Question two, to follow up on Mr. Leiter's comment. Yeah, I was the guy that put the little child signs out there, and coming down Del Rose, it's tree overgrown and so forth, and there's quite a speed there. What's the, maybe this is a follow-up question, too. What's the policy, or what can we do in regards to a speed bump or something in order to slow people down in that? Is there a, open for comment?
And so I'll just, you know, we don't, I can email you back and give you the RCOC's version of why they don't do speed bumps, but I'll, if I can get your email after, I will, I will respond to it.
Okay, that'd be good. Yeah, yeah, because we'd really like to try to find a way, whether it's signage or something, and I know the speed bump issue with the snowplows and all that stuff and so forth, but the signs aren't working, and so typically, I just walk the dog and stand in the middle of the street and make my son vulnerable.
Please don't do that. Please don't stand in the street.
So, yes, I'd like to find an alternate approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one caveat to that, we will have, for the next budget season, now that we do have the Public Safety Milledge Pass, we will be bringing back our traffic unit, so that will help in some ways, because it is systemic throughout the entire township of speeding and cut-throughs and all that, so having four, four more on the road will help.
And I did support that bill, thank you.
Thank you. Did he already do the three minutes?
Yes, he did. Well, he actually didn't use the whole three minutes.
Did you still have time?
He did have about 30 seconds, if you don't mind.
I'm Dale Leiter. Basically, from when we moved in, that original lot, if it goes from 1937 Bloomfield, our property, to Del Rose, that was the original. There were two lots there, and one was from our property, and, you know, and just make a cross. I can't speak as eloquently as some, but that lot was, both two lots, side by side, from Del Rose to our property on Bloomfield Drive. That was the original when we moved in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, please. We have all these young kids on the street, too. We have a family that just moved next to us. They have three little kids. One is four, one is two, and the other one was about a year old. And we see a lot of people running up and down Bloomfield Drive with their carriages, the mom and the dad and their kids on little bikes and everything, so we just want to try to keep it a quiet street. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other public comment for this? Okay, I will close the public comment, and Patty, can you address some of those?
Sure. The applicant is here this evening, so he could speak to his intentions of orienting the residents. At the time of we submit for a lot split request, we identified what the envelope, but we don't have any criteria related to, you know, the prospective residential layouts, so maybe the applicant can speak to that. They chose to orient the lots to Bloomfield Drive as opposed to Del Rose. And, you know, as they have depicted the envelope, this is the, that is the minimum setback requirements, being 40 feet off the frontage, which would be, in this case, for the corner lot, a frontage on Del Rose as well as Bloomfield, so both of those would be at least 40 feet. And then the side setbacks between the proposed parcels would be a minimum of 16 feet for combined 32 feet between the two residents. Our side setbacks now to the abutting neighbor is 16, which is throughout the township. But again, that would be, I get the minimum requirements, and a particular layout would then identify what the actual placement of the residents on those lots would look like. And I don't recall the other question?
No, that was it. She's the person that said it was a follow-up, she's going to send it to you.
And is the applicant here? You said the applicant is here? Can you come on up, and, because I'm sure we'll have questions, too? You could just come on up, introduce yourself, and you can add some to this discussion.
I'm the owner of the new lot.
Shiva Dufuny, JAD Services. We did the plans, provided to the township.
Okay. Did you want to address, is your plan to extend the house all the way to the edges, or just stay within the?
No. Of course, according to township ordinance, we have to maintain certain percentage of site coverage. And I see no reason why not, once the house is going to be designed, is to meet with the neighbors and seek their comes and feedback in order, you know, to come up with a solution that it will be acceptable. And, you know, at the end of the day, whomever is going to live there, is going to be a neighbor to, to the residents that surrounds that property.
Does anybody have questions?
Do you have, one of the comments was about frontage. Both parcels right now, do you know, I mean, obviously, one will be on Bloomfield Drive, the corner one, do you have a sense as to which way it's going to face? If it faces Del Rose and goes out Del Rose?
I'm thinking.
Del Rose.
Del Rose, yes.
Yes.
So you are thinking Del Rose.
And I think driveway would be further away from the intersection of Del Rose and Bloomfield. So to me, I favor driveway on Del Rose being as north as possible, as long as it does not create a conflict with maybe the driveway across the street.
Does it have to go with setbacks?
Yeah.
You have to orient it, you can't orient it facing forward, or now that's your frontage.
Well, but they've already got 40 out there.
Yes, 40 on both sides.
Oh, and there's 16 on the front.
40 on, that's 40 on Del Rose and 40 on Bloomfield, so.
The front's fine.
They could go either way.
But does he have enough for the back? If that's the back?
Yeah, it's the rear.
That's what I'm not sure.
Would that be enough, Patty, to, knowing the rules of the, if they change it where the front is now that way, is there enough in the back?
As long as they comply with having the frontages along both streets, and they do have a rear orient, a rear setback, which would be opposite of Bloomfield Drive, that would comply with the zoning ordinance. If they decide to have, you know, their driveway off of a different orientation of their front door, as long as they met the setback, the setbacks on the site itself, it would be compliant.
And this, as it is right now, is compliant?
Correct.
If they, even if they face that way?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, just one comment. I know there were a lot of comments about safety and concern that the lot split and the subsequent two homes would result, it sounded like the concern was in additional safety issues, but that's not what's before us. Although we take safety, and certainly families and children, very seriously. Following up on what Danny said, fortunately, the residents of the township saw it upon them that public safety was, milledge was approved, which will give us the additional traffic patrol. And so I think we can certainly work with the police department to get additional patrolling in your area. Unless there's additional questions, I mean, the.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is for Patty. You mentioned, and I saw in the engineer's comments about the drainage issue. And a few months ago, we had come before us an issue regarding a new construction that didn't take into account the drainage issue, and resulted in a big problem for them. And so what do we do to ensure that, as the engineering report said, that the drainage, I forgot the text of what they said, the drainage pattern, that the drainage pattern will be maintained? Is that, is that something that we put into the approval? Or how do we, how do we enforce that?
Well, the benefit of calling it out at this point, and that's, that's why we reach out to the various departments, is to at least have it known, especially for the property owner or the prospective purchaser of the property, that there appears to be an existing drainage pattern. It will have to be addressed depending on how the property is developed. And if there needs to be some mitigation to that, it'll have to be contained on the property itself. So it's built into the engineering. Because there is an application that would be processed to our Engineering and Environmental Services Department, they, too, would be looking at what is, what is the existing condition, what is the proposed condition, and also just calling out, because this is a original lot, if you will, that there could be some wetlands on the property, and we don't really know.
Yeah.
And so that all is, will be required at the time that there is a building permit application, and clearly reviewed thoroughly before any permitting is.
Okay. So there is that mechanism to?
Yes.
Because I don't want to interrupt that drainage pattern, and then we potentially harm all these neighbors. So, okay, that was my question.
Are there any other questions?
Okay. So with that said, I think the applicant's met, they have met the criteria for the lot split, the standards for a lot split. And I'll add, Michael, what you had stated, that the, certainly it's imperative that the applicant maintain the drainage or the grades, the way it currently is, so there's not runoff on neighboring properties. And I know the departments will certainly look at that strongly.
A motion by trustee Barnett? You're sitting, I almost called you trustee Murray. Trustee Barnett?
Hmm.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Clerk Brook. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It does pass. All right. Thank you. And thank you for agreeing to meet with the neighbors. Starting out with a good, a good neighbor like that is a good thing.
Yep.
All right. Or do we have to do a roll call since there's a public hearing?
No.
Okay. So next, we have the public hearing regarding lot split request for 2171 to 2173 Klingon Smith, presented by Patty Volker.
So now that we're warmed up about lot splits, so, okay, here, does that help? Okay, good. Thank you. So, as we introduced at the last meeting, this is a request to consider a lot division of the property that is at, that fronts on Klingon Smith Road. Again, it's in the west area of Telegraph, north of Square Lake. And so we have some pictures of the existing premises, the structures that are on the lot. And this does have frontage on Square Lake that we'll talk about, and then the existing frontages along that area. So the property is 3.48 acres. It has, excuse me, the intention is to demolish all of the existing structures and any appurtenances in order to subdivide the parcels into three single-family residential lots. They are zoned single-family. And as we can see from the aerial, there is, you know, parcels in addition to lots two through five of Square Lake Country Club involved with the, with the proposal, to be able to then present a three, three residential lots with frontages on Klingon Smith Road. The part of this request, too, is that through our research, and through research from the applicant, is that at the time that the property was planted, the Klingon Smith Road itself was not specifically dedicated to the Road Commission of Oakland County. So you're going to see in our report, as I'm sure you have, and then some comments that we'll have later, that part of the conditions of approval is that they proceed with that process through Oakland County to have that right-of-way dedicated. And they're depicting that in the survey that is, is shown with the three parcels, A, parcel B, parcel C, and then the park, which is the residual property that has frontage on Square Lake, with the given 66-foot right-of-way of Klingon Smith. When we reviewed the proposal, again, after the review of the standards of our Chapter 18, Division of Lots or Parcels, each of these lots contain more than the minimum 20,000 square feet for the R1 District, containing 34,008 square feet, 40,722 square feet, and 43,106 square feet, all exceeding the 100-foot lot width with sewers. When we reviewed the average of lots within 500 feet, with their principal frontage falling within this area, we find that they exceeded the average of 26,696 square feet of land by their respective acreage I just previously stated. And also, the lot width, average was 119 feet was the lot width, and the lots are presented as 120 feet for lots, parcels A and B, and parcel C being 192 feet. And we also called out that that outlot, outlot park is approximately 3,900 square feet, and it has approximately 140 feet of frontage, lake frontage. So through the analysis, and acknowledging that the existing road is not formally dedicated to the Road Commission, the property owners will be required to reply, to apply and receive approval of the dedicated public right-of-way for Klingon Smith, as identified on these documents. And that becomes important as it relates to the utilities. The proposed parcels have access to public water and sanitary sewer. The resultant parcels will be required to pay the water capital and direct connection charges, and the sanitary sewer debt and direct connection charges required at the time of building permit dismissal. The applicant shall obtain and dedicate the public right-of-way to the Road Commission, or the applicant shall provide easements for the township's public water main and public sanitary sewer as needed. So the survey that's been presented, both delineating the details of parcel A, parcel B, and parcel C, also call out the proposed footprint, if you were building envelope, I should say, not footprint, building envelope, for each of the lots that all would comply with the minimum front side and rear setbacks, so they are one districts. And in this instance, as we're speaking to the private park, it's noted in our Chapter 40, that not more than one motorboat shall be launched and/or docked adjacent to a separate lake frontage, and therefore, there's only one motorboat shall be launched. lake frontage, and therefore, there's only one motorboat shall be launched and/or docked at this designated park area along Square Lake as part of this submission. And as the various departments reviewed this proposal, excuse me, let me go back to the overall, our Engineering and Environmental Service Department recommended approval of the lot split, subject to that dedication of the public right-of-way, and also providing easements if, if should that dedication not occur, to be able to accommodate the public, the township's public water main and public sanitary sewer. The assessor noted that the proposed lots would not suffer any additional exterior obsolescence due to the new lots, and also noted that the park will have its own parcel ID, yet the value of the park parcel will be added to only the other three lots, because they are the sole beneficiaries of this lakefront lot. And neither the police or fire had any concerns with this proposal. So similarly, with other lot split requests, the township board is asked to evaluate how this proposed division will be consistent and compatible with the existing lots, parcels, and uses in the neighborhood. And so upon receiving public comment, the board is being asked to consider approving the lot split as presented, subject to compliance with the requirements of the township departments, or to deny the application as presented. So I know we have the applicant here, and as well, I'm here to answer any questions.
Start by opening up the public comment. Do we have anybody here that's looking to talk? Not that I, not that I'm pushing you out there, Kirk, but-
Again, I'm Kirk Branick. I live at 1642 Hamilton. It actually is directly across from parcel C. My home is right here. We also own the lake bottom, which is Outlot B, 38 acres, which the parcel, the park goes out into. So all around this is also, believe it or not, our property. We're supportive of, of this lot split. We did send a letter to the township, kind of outlining three key areas, based on discussions with Patty, also the applicant. It sounds like that those three conditions are met, which is really good. The three items were clearly, we want, you know, three single-family homes, which would be a plus to the neighborhood, since we have a high density already. Second thing is, the park consists of 125 feet of frontage, I believe, at least what I kind of saw, and, and we want to make sure that that's the only area, if in fact, they do, you know, seawall or whatever, that's going to be disturbed. Square Lake is one of the cleanest lakes in the state of Michigan, believe it or not. We want to keep it that way. There's a natural green belt that actually runs from my home to the park. We want that to stay in place. We understand that, yeah, there will only be really a kind of a view to lake from here, that they'll share the frontage, but we think it's a plus. If we can meet those three conditions, we're very, very supportive. So we appreciate you looking at our, our letter, which it sounds like you already did, but that's the only comments we have. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to talk?
Hi, Michael Henness, and I'm, I live directly on the other side of the property, at 2159 Klingon Smith, and I'm in support of the combination and the split of the properties. I think it's a good solution to, for the applicants and for the neighbors. Interested to see how the park concept is going to work, would they all have equal ownership, or just, or would they handle that as a separate entity? But I think it's a good, good plan for the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to talk?
I'm Mark Kokmire, 1921 Del Rose Drive. As a follow-up to the, our prior one, as well as this one, the park, so these A, B, and C have access to the lake, and the rule is you can only have one boat to do that. And so, I'm curious how that is going to be managed between the three lots, you do, you know, one year, one guy gets it, the next year, the next guy, or is it, how do they do that? But the reason I bring this up again is because in our prior lot split, the same applies as well. Those two, that lot right there, also is shared with a small 75-foot on Square Lake as well, and I don't know, do, do you leave it up to the individuals, or is there some ordinance, or how does, it's, it gets contentious? Any comments?
We will address that. We always take in all the comments first, and then we address everything.
All right, well, that's, that'd be my comment on that, how we'd, how we'd be able to do that, because that's going to be a bonnet contention.
Is there anybody else here to talk?
It's going to sound a lot the same. My name's Bob Wychell, and I'm at 1782 Maplewood, but I also have the concern, if you have three different lots, or now homes, families, how they would divide up the, the one boat, and that's just clearly a challenge. We have that this year with Ward's Orchard, where they don't have enough property, and they put the second boat on anyways, and we're working through the township to, to eliminate that. The reality is, if you look at A, B, and C, I mean, A has 90% of the property in front of it, if there's any way for, for us or for the township to say, okay, well, whoever gets Lot A, I mean, you have the access to, access to the boat, the right for the boat. That would make Lot A obviously more valuable than B and C, but, you know, C does, doesn't face the lake, isn't anywhere, has no property in front of it, and B only has really a few feet. So if there's any ability to assign that boat slip to A, that eliminates long-term problems as we move forward with who gets the boat in that area. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to talk? Okay, then we will close public comment, and I'm not sure if anybody saw the last meeting, but I mentioned it so many times, I think it was obvious, but I'm going to do it again, so it's on video. There will be a zero tolerance policy. They all very much understand, and will say it now since you're president, there will only be one boat. If a second one goes on, their tickets start coming, and it gets taken off. So we are, just as we have to do right now at the other place where they thought no one was looking, there are always people looking. Please don't bother trying to put that second boat on there. It is not allowed, and it won't be, it won't be tolerated. So I just want to, again, say it, so it's on video, we all have heard it, so when, when you do hear from Kirk, if somebody does it, please don't make the police come out and remove it, please just move it off. Just don't put a second boat out there. Okay? So I just want to make sure we've all heard it, we've all seen it, and it is, it won't, it is a zero tolerance, so we won't, we will make sure that there's only one boat out there. And thank you, Kirk, because I know you do a lot of that heavy lifting to make sure to get all that done, but every once in a while, we do have a, someone digs their heels in that we have to send the police out on there, or code enforcement, so please, please understand, there will only be one boat, and it's up to them, actually, I believe, how they decide. We don't force that on somebody, they just understand that, doesn't matter which one of them has it, but only one of them gets it. Do you want to add any more?
No, that's actually just what I was going to comment on.
I just wanted to make sure it's on video, it's in the minutes, so there's zero chance that there was any miscommunication.
So I think, I mean, I had the same question that a couple of the residents had, which was, how do we manage that? I mean, they all equally own the park, so who gets the boat?
That's their issue, and that's, the developer can come up and talk to you about that, but-
Yeah, but I, I think it's, I think it's a little Pollyannaish to think that that's not going to become our issue.
It'll start getting fines, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have condominiums, there's a lot of people that there are more than one in an area that, that we're dealing with, and they've been able to, I think it's only been once or twice in the 50-some year. I mean, most people know there's a rule on that lake, and they moved to that lake for a reason, because it is well-managed, it is clean, it is understood, and they have estate, so that actually went all the way to the Supreme Court.
I, I, I hear you.
Yeah.
But, and I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer, but, you know, real estate agents sell property, and they say, put, put in there, like, I, you know, my, the house I lived in before advertised with lake privileges, and then when I got there and I called the lake association, they said, no, you don't have privileges. I said, well, it was in the real estate listing, they said, that's not our problem. So what happens when somebody puts lake privileges through a private beach, somebody buys the house, assuming they can put a boat there, and then they can't, because they're the second one? And I mean, I just, it seems like we're just-
I mean, they do actually all have lake privileges, just, you know, they do all have one third-
Well, they have lake privileges in the sense that they own, co-own this park-
They can go and hang out on the beach, right.
But who gets, I mean, is it the first person that drops their boat in, in the spring? I mean, like-
Township board can't protect a, with respect to somebody misrepresenting something in-
Well, I know that, but-
Right.
All we can do is emphasize, as Danny has done, that if the second boat goes in, we will enforce, we will issue tickets, and we'll force the issue that way, and hopefully, when the property is marketed, they will market it in good faith, and, and not make those misrepresentations, so.
Can you come on up?
Indeed, restricted.
Can, are you the applicant's, yeah, can you come on up? Because I think that'll help to hear from you.
I'm Mike Cotter, and I'm his friend. The issue that you're talking about, I think, does have some validity, but it'll be deed restricted. The deed will convey what they can and can't do, and it's not a question of whether, you know, just because the first guy's there, he gets to have it, there'll be an agreement, and it'll be enforceable.
Can you walk us through your idea of, will you be promoting it to the Lot A, or will you be saying first two buyers gets the boat?
The way it'll-
How will you restrict it?
The way they'll be sold, we are probably going to sell the property to a developer, and that developer will convey title to each of three people. And in the conveyance, it'll identify that there is a park that each of the three own, and on that park, or in that waterway, the association will only allow one boat, and that'll be up to them. It's, it'll be in black and white, and it'll be a, it'll be a recorded document, and they'll know that. So I think that, to assume that there's going to be a problem with that is probably, I can't believe that there will be, because it's a matter, if it was just a, an agreement amongst parties, that would be one thing, but this is going to be a deed restriction that's going to follow each of their title. So I don't see it as an issue.
Is there any way to, to Michael's point, to put it with, or with Mr. Wachols, Wachols' point, to put it with a specific lot?
I don't think you should. If, if it's going to be deed restricted, we would still have the ability to enforce it by issuing citations, and certainly the association-
Sure.
-or whoever the benefit of party is, could enforce a deed restriction, so. So I don't, I don't think we should get in the business of dictating which one of those three lots gets, gets the boat. I don't think that would be appropriate.
And the way it's happened so far, Michael, is whenever it did come up, it came up once. I know Kirk normally reaches out, gives them the Supreme Court ruling that says that they can't. There was one time, and we did send somebody out there, and to be honest, if they're going to fight about it, they both come out, because until they can figure it out, only one can be out there, and not two. So it would be, it would behoove them to work together to maybe get a pontoon, they all split, you know, that's what a friend does in a different area, I believe on yours, actually, Walnut Lake.
Once the township got involved, they pulled off, which was wonderful. And in 30 years, we've had no issues, so.
Better knock on that one.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions, comments?
Let me make a motion, the criteria been met for the lot split, certainly in favor of, of the lot split, subject to the criteria, the letter that was presented to the board at the previous meeting, when it was first introduced with those three criteria, in addition to the fact that the representation by the owner, that if it is sold, there will be deed restrictions in there regarding the boat, use of the boat, and property.
So by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by Treasure Keeps, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. Thank you. All right, we got to move on, yeah. Sorry, but we can talk off, we can talk together after.
There's not much more.
Yeah. Next is to consider the proposed increase to election inspector compensation, and that will be Clerk Brook.
Oh, is it next, or is it?
Oh, did I, yeah. Oh, sorry, oh, sorry!
Don't want to forget you, John. You've been waiting here.
Consider the Fourth Amendment to Cloud Nine liquor license agreement, and that'll be Patty. Sorry about that. I'm going to be honest. Did an assumptive close on that one, I think.
So just briefly, as it's been identified, you know, in the staff report, the Maple Theater, represented by the Cloud Nine Theater Partner, Partners, is seeking amendment to their liquor license to go from their most recent, 2019 floor plan, where it introduced additional seating, restaurant use, and other improvements from the exterior of the property, to now a 2022 floor plan, where they intend to remove the, most of the kitchen, as it related to the former restaurant use. They intend to repurpose the space, so as to be able to accommodate, you know, the remaining seating. I do have a correction, the proposed reconfiguration decreases the interior seating capacity for food service from 50 seats to 42 seats. And so what's depicted is the seating includes 42, excuse me, 36 seats at nine foretops, and then the six bar stools, which gives us our 42 seats. The plan is then depicted in this area, again, primarily focusing on that northerly elevation. The resulting space that is being added to the lobby lounge, you know, does have some lounge seating, but it's not part of the restaurant seating that we would count for any of our zoning ordinance requirements. The reason this has come back before you is because the plan, the, the previous amendments were very specific as to the floor plan, and the seating, and the operation. And now, as the property owner has asked for a modification, we were compelled to have to bring this back to the township board, and ask that you consider this new floor plan. Here, the, the comments and the rationale for the, the reduction of that particular restaurant operation, and their intentions going forward, and then seeking approval for the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the agreement. I just want to note that Exhibit B, that's found in your packet, because the applicant did receive some input from the fire marshal, there is a slight modification to the demolition, of which there is a wall remaining just outside of the lobby, that has to remain because of, of compliance with the fire codes. So this is what you're seeing before you, would be the Exhibit B, that would be part of the executed copy. And I think that is it. And in this plan, it shows the detail of the demolition, so what you're seeing hashed out, as far as the islands, the counters, the walk-in refrigeration unit, and so forth, all is being eliminated, and that is the freed-up area that will accommodate a larger queuing area for the patrons of the theater. So with that, I will, answering questions that you may have, and I know the applicant is here tonight as well.
Do you want to come on up?
I don't know what you want me to say, but-
To just start with introducing yourself.
Oh, my name is John Goldstein. I'm a resident of the township, as well as a business owner in the township. We've owned the theater since 2012, when we renovated it from just a three-screen movie theater into what it was at the time, which was actually a coffee shop, the theater, and we had a bar, and it was wonderful, and it was great, but financially, it wasn't hitting kind of our marks, so we decided that we were going to expand. A lot of people asked for food, so we thought we'd get into the restaurant business. We tried that for a while, and realized that we're popcorn salesmen and not restaurateurs, and so then we tried to make it into a restaurant that we could give to somebody to run, and we had a restaurateur that we actually built it for, who, then COVID happened, so we were kind of stuck with a restaurant and a closed theater. And so we leased the space to Como's, I think they were- And so we leased the space to Como's, I think they were in front of you at some point, and they did a pop-up restaurant there for a while, and they're experienced restaurateurs. And they, while they, they enjoyed the time there, and they enjoyed being a pop-up, they just didn't think it was a, a good spot for a permanent restaurant, and we agreed. So then it came back to what do we do? We've had a difficult two years, as you can imagine, in our business, and mostly with this theater, because the clientele is older and has been slower to return to the theater. But what we do know is that when we first, our first floor plan was probably, I would, I don't mean to expound, but it was probably the most magical that the Maple had ever been. It was really a wonderful place. People would come before and after a movie, they would stay, they would listen to music, they would go to the theater, they'd, then with their friends, they wouldn't walk out the door, they would sit down, have a cup of coffee or a glass of wine, and so we just think, and people would work there during the day and have coffee, and it was really a nice atmosphere. So what we're trying to do is kind of get back to that original plan that seemed to work very well for us. The wall situation, we hope that down the line, that we would be able to, we need to put sprinklers into the building. It's an older building, the entire plaza has this problem. And just until we do that, we're going to have to keep that fire-rated wall. And we'll see how it works, but we're hoping that we could get this done quickly, because our most important season starts in a few weeks. And we would like to announce to people that the Maple is kind of back to what it was, and try to get our clientele back for the holiday Oscar movie season. And so really, at this point, we're just eliminating that wall and moving it, and keeping the kitchen, we'll still have food, but only food a 16-year-old kid can make really well. And hopefully...
You should have been a comedian, you've got some good lines.
Oh, thank you. I'll be here all night. And so, yeah, no, I mean, this has been a labor of love for my wife and I, and we love this. We have, we're in the theater business, and we have multiple locations, and this one is our favorite, because it's our neighborhood theater. This is what reflects mostly on, on us. And so we really would like to give it, I mean, we could have closed this theater many times over the last two years, but I'm a glutton for punishment and can keep wanting to get it right. So this is the fourth, and hopefully the last time we will ask you to amend our liquor license, and then hopefully we will be here for another 10 years in this floor plan.
I can tell you, as somebody who goes there...
Patty will kill me if I come back again.
No, I'm just glad you didn't leave, because that's a place that I've grown up in, I live about a half a mile or so away, and you did do an amazing job when you, I mean, didn't you have like a puke-ic tile fireplace?
Yeah, we had a, we had a really nice fire. We'd like to bring back the fireplace.
You've gone so many cool different directions.
Got to talk to the fire chief about that one. So, no, yeah, we'd like to get back the fireplace, and you know, we think that it will actually be a really good event space as well. You know, when my daughter was at Bloomfield High here, you know, she was on the tennis team, and at the end of the season, we had to find a place to have the banquet. And there's probably like 20 teams, and we, it was very difficult to find that, and I was like, oh, this space would be perfect for that. You know, just bring in like local high school teams, and banquets, and small parties, business events. And so we'd like to just get it back. Like, right now, what I did was I tried to make a big kitchen. The idea was that the restaurant would be one of these kind of more commercial kitchens, and the food would all be sent out the door, instead of people eating there. And it just never, it just didn't really materialize with all the Uber Eats and all of that, which was a lot more, I think, hype, and obviously during the pandemic, that worked really well. But now, it's, it's really died off and hypercompetitive. So we'd like to just focus on our strengths and, you know, get people back to enjoy the space for what I think the intent is, which is a, a nice local entertainment space with adult-oriented, not, you know, like Maple art movies.
Yes, understood.
Different adult kind of content. Anyway, so that's it. If you have any questions?
No, not a question as much as...
Yeah, I know!
No, I mean, you really, first of all, I appreciate that you didn't close the theater.
Thank you.
And it really is a gem for the entire community. It adds so much, adds to the fabric of the community. There aren't too many businesses like yours that, you know, going back to the opening and what you and your wife have done to it over the years, it's certainly appreciated by, you know, by the community. I remember liquor, well, not, it wasn't amended, your liquor license number one.
Yeah. That one was a tough one.
That's right, it was. But it's not often that a business requests going back, rather than asking for more, you're asking for less.
Yes.
And I think it certainly does add more to the original ambiance and feel, character of your business, and certainly very supportive.
Great.
Anybody else have anything to add?
I would just say, you know, it's not only a, it really is a landmark, not just for Bloomfield, but I think for greater southeastern Michigan. And I commend you and your team for everything you've done in the past, and really being diligent in doing whatever you could to keep it open, and getting a new format, a new old format. Actually, we had my wife's, one of her significant birthdays there, and I think this kind of a format, and it was, it was a great flow. And I, and you did try to do some different things, and I commend you for doing that, but it didn't work, and I commend you for recognizing that, and you do make good popcorn.
Thank you.
There's times we'll just come and buy your popcorn, too, even...
A lot of people do. You'd be surprised how many people just walk in, leave their car running, run in, I need a large to go home, which is great.
We've done it. Anybody else have any comments? If not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
By Treasurer, sorry, okay. So Move by Trustee Showstack, Move by Treasurer Keeps, all in favor.
Aye. Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Forward to it. John, when are you going to start?
As soon as I can get a demo permit.
Okay. Good luck, see you.
We're, we're pretty close.
Yeah, you are.
And the fire guard gave us all over there, which I think actually makes it easier, so they take me out the cooler, and all we got to do is demo that walk-in and that field and other ones. So hopefully for Ticket of Paradise, which is the George Clooney Julia Roberts...
We'll be there.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, so next, next we have the Consider the Proposed Increase to Election Inspector Compensation. Let me have Clerk Brook.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Walsh. So Election Day is 29, 29 days away, and elections don't happen without the dedicated work of township residents and nearby residents who work on Election Day. About 150 different people are called upon to work on Election Day. And it's best, of course, if we have experienced people who come back and do this year in and year out. And we've been blessed with that type of dedication to the township. In the past 22 months, we've implemented a couple of additional things to keep, keep the people we have and attract new talented folks. You might all recall that we did a recognition program here for long-serving precinct workers, some of which had worked for almost 40 years, and many are in the 20-year range. We've also started an election inspector relations and retention program, which focuses a lot on communications, ongoing basis, with the different election workers who are in the community to keep them engaged with the clerk's office and engaged with new things going on in elections. So those things have all worked, and what I'm here now to talk a little bit about is one other item with regard to our efforts to recognize, retain, and, and, and thank the community members that get involved with elections, and that is a financial thank you. So I'm recommending that we increase some of the compensation that the election workers receive, both in the precinct and in the, the absentee voting counting board. Note on the, the chart, there's AVCB, it's an acronym for absentee voting counting board. It's actually technically another precinct in and of itself, it's our 19th precinct. The inspectors last received a, you know, increase in the township in 2015, so it's been seven years. We've steadily fallen farther and farther behind some of our local municipalities. The absentee voting counting board has, you know, been set at the rate they're at now for, since 2014 and before. I actually couldn't find an example of when they, when that last change was. So it's been even longer that they've been set at the same pay rate. Now, I want to recognize, too, that since 2015, you know, this job has never been easy, but it's become harder and harder. The stress is up, the focus on them is up, the stakes are higher than they've ever been before, and it's, you know, getting a little harder to, to keep the people, despite the efforts we've engaged in. There's some aversion to getting involved, in fact. So I want to, again, commend the folks that do this, thank them heartily for their contribution to our community and democracy generally. And one way we can do that, and honestly, no one does it for the money, but one way we can do that is to increase their compensation a little bit to recognize them for their work in the township. So on the chart, I have a recommendation as, as to where we'd go, and I'm happy to discuss those or answer any questions.
Any questions? Michael?
Yeah. So I just want to clarify or, or confirm, Martin, that our elections staff does, do not need to live in the township.
That's correct. They, they do need to be registered voters in the state of Michigan, but beyond that, they do not need to live in the township. There are other criteria, but...
Right, well, the reason I say that is because if, you know, you're right, the most, all election workers don't do it for the money. But if the decision is between working in Bloomfield Township, or working in Birmingham, or West Bloomfield, or Waterford, or somewhere else, to do the same thing and get paid double, then they probably would do that, or might do that. So I, I agree with you that I think this is a retention issue, and I would support the increase.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And if not, I look for a motion.
Well, this was brought before the Election Commission also?
We have discussed it there.
And that was supported by the Election Commission?
Well, there is no, this is a decision of the board trustees, not the commission, so we didn't vote on it there, but it was discussed.
We were supportive.
Yes.
And I would like for a motion.
So I'll make the motion that we increase the election worker compensation in the amounts provided by the clerk.
Support.
Motion by trustee Showstack, support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Then next, we have to approve the payroll and vouchers for October 10th. And if I'll have a chance to look them over, unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion. Motion by Treasurer Keeps.
Support.
Support by trustee Showstack, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That does pass, and next, your favorite?
I move, we adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Brook.
Support.
Support by trustee Faquih.
Everybody supports that motion!
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everybody, we'll see you in two weeks.